Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? I've got a couple here. We want to, under old business, want to talk a little bit about the appearance committee. And under new business, want to talk a little bit about the P&amp;V recommendations for the family exemption on RA5 and RA, and also to talk about the square footage change. So we'll talk a little bit about that, and we'll go over all that in the work session.
Say that last part again.
Yeah, we'll talk about that briefly, and then we're going to have a work through it at our next work session, and then we'll have a public hearing. Okay, anybody else have any other questions?
No.
Okay, get a motion to accept the agenda.
Motion to...
Wait a minute, can I say something? I'm sorry, about the consent agenda?
Not yet, we're not through yet.
You're making a motion to approve the consent agenda, right?
Oh, no, we aren't, no. No, we're doing the agenda.
Okay.
The agenda.
I'm sorry.
I made a motion to accept the agenda.
To approve, okay. Have a vote on favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, get a motion on the consent agenda.
I do.
Yeah.
On the minutes of July 11th. It appears, I was not at that meeting, but at the end it says that I'm the one that made the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Well, not you.
And I wasn't there, so.
You were here in spirit.
Yeah.
He's been thinking about you.
We need to adapt, we need to...
We have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Vote to pass. Okay, public comment period for anything not listed on the agenda.
Mecklenburg 7 Oak Hill Drive, I just had a couple of things I wanted to mention to the council. At the Moore County level, last week, the Board of Commissioners approved the revamping or renovation of the land use plan, not piecemeal like they had originally intended, but as an overhaul using a steering committee which has not been appointed yet, but going through the whole process. That was urged to them by about nine different folks that spoke at their meeting, all wanting a complete renovation and look at the land use plan. It's 10 years old, and what the commissioners had originally proposed was just a couple of changes that, at least in my opinion, were development friendly and not really in line with the existing land use plan. I just tell you, this is going to happen now. We need Foxfire Village to be involved, we need our residents to be involved, and no matter what you think about growth and development in the county, this is your opportunity. And I'd also mention, one of the speakers gave an attaboy to the Foxfire Village Council for having downzoned our RA districts to RA5, so...
Which was your idea?
Well, and along these lines, I'm going to hand to the clerk an article, it's decades old, but it was referred to me recently, it's called "Paying for Growth: Crossfaring from Development." If you haven't seen or read it, take a look, it's only about eight, nine pages, and although it's an old article, I think it's very true today. I was also asked by someone, you may have seen a zoning decision sign up on Hoffman Road around that horse farm that's up near McDuffie Lane. That was, there's a lot, about a two-acre lot behind that horse farm bordering Arbor Creek and, and I believe, probably some of our nature conservancy. Two point something acres, which is owned by the VAS American Legion Post, I believe they're number 296. They merged with Post 303, which used to be there at that property. There's an old dilapidated building there, the, the American Legion leadership wants to reopen that and use it. There were a lot of people talking, the neighbors up there generally opposed at the planning board meeting last week, telling horrific stories, I don't know if they're true or not, of in the 70s and 80s and 90s, dances and shootings and stabbings and all sorts of things. That's not what the American Legion leadership was proposing at all. But anyway, that's happening up there. Our planning board was divided, but has, has made a recommendation to approve that rezoning to RA2, which will allow them to have a social club. So no matter what their current plans are, you know, a social club could happen.
So this is the property that's abutting up against the Sweeney property where we...
Yeah, I believe part of it probably does. I understand, if you look up there, there's a pond right next to it, they do not own that, the Almonds still own it. The Almonds gave this property to the Post way back in 1953 to commemorate a couple of soldiers that were fallen in Europe, that were Moore County residents, and it was an American Legion Post for many, many years out there, and then apparently turned into a dance hall somehow. So the, the neighbors up there are obviously concerned.
Because of, because of what you stated, they had been told at the meeting about the deaths and the shootings and...
Well, these, some of the neighbors have experienced the noise and the dances and everything, several of them gave firsthand accounts of, I can't sit on my porch when they used to do these things, because they, it was, the, the electricity was cut off to the place in 2015, that's why they're no longer a legal nonconformity. They were a legal nonconformity after the rezoning, but when they gave up the electricity for that many years, that automatically shifted them into their nonconforming, and they needed the rezoner, and that's why they came to the commission, or they, it will be considered by the commissioners at some point.
At the meeting I went to with the commissioners, they were talking about the steering committee, and they were going to look for municipal participation, and did that come up at all during the discussion?
No, not at the planning board, nor at the, they didn't talk, but boy jumped at that opportunity with my recommendation.
What is the best way to, to link into their meetings and their, what, what are they going to be publicizing, or which specific meetings are the important meetings to attend?
Well, their website, I think, is the best, and their agenda's...
The commissioners' website?
Right, and their agenda is put on beforehand. But as, as I've talked, and I know you're aware, the UDO at the county level has seen changes over the years that are more development friendly than the original land use plan, and that was why the commissioners are looking to change it, and they just wanted to kind of do that piecemeal, just change the land use plan so that it was the UDO, but the land use plan is the, is the strategic plan. You don't change the law to go to the strategic plan, you hopefully change your regulations to fulfill your vision, but anyway, I got to go.
Thank you, appreciate it. If anybody else would like to make any comments? Okay, he's only administered, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Sadie Berger, 66 Woodwood Circle. I would like to inquire as to whether there are any plans to move toward paperless building for our water bills. My husband and I spend three months of the year in Georgia, and even if you use mail forwarding, it's a minimum of two weeks before we get it, usually longer than that, and it would be so much more convenient. It is the only paper bill that we still receive on a monthly basis.
Thank you, we, we are considering it.
Okay.
Okay, now is there anybody else that has anything, don't let anybody show it. Okay, he's only administered a report.
Okay, this report is for the period of July 12 through today on the date. Currently, 65 homes are under construction or beginning, two of those are within ETJ. This month, I approved seven single-family resident applications for three in Windy Ridge, one is located on Richmond Road, and two on Portland Circle, a home on Ridge Road, Richmond Road, at 65 Richmond, 14 Green Valley, and 20 Oak Hill Drive. Three certificate, certificate of occupancy were issued for 33 Forest Lake Drive, 13 Eagle Drive, and 54 Forest Lake Drive, and other permits issued were for one structure modification, which was a screened porch, three accessory structures, one deck, three fence, and one swimming pool. So we still have several more on the way at Windy Ridge, and I expect those with the next probably month, and then it might be done, hopefully not done, but with the application process.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Lisa?
No.
Council members, report first of all, finance. Councilwoman Gregrich, you're up.
Yes, I'm up, okay. Well, our cash coffers are getting a little low this time of year with our tax dollars waiting to come in. Right now, our general fund, we have a total of $2,321,286. Of that, we have reserves of $1,478,239, and then not reserved, we have $843,048. Did I say that first number wrong? You look at... Oh, me too. Can you find? Okay. In the water fund, we have a total cash on hand of $1,336,150, reserves of $471,76, and not reserved is $865,074. So also, in the capital, just so you know, Capital Trust dividends this month, and we are, we're now starting a new fiscal year, so our general fund for the month of July earned $8,301.02, and our water fund earned $3,556.11, so, and those are also the year-to-date numbers. Now, just so, just to get a feeling for last year, we were only in the trust fund for probably half of last year, I think. We earned, we earned $62,899 of interest in the fund, so that was good for us.
Good job.
Good for us, yeah. And unless anyone has any questions, tax bills should be going out, I know you recently got your county tax bills, and the Foxfire Tax Village bills should be going out, I would think within two to three weeks, I would say. And just so people understand, when you pay your county taxes, Foxfire doesn't get any of that money, none of that comes back to Foxfire. All of that money is, goes to the county for their expenses. When you get billed by Foxfire, those are your Foxfire taxes. I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear on that.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, next, Regent Burke, Councilman Norman.
Okay, I'm sure some people are aware of it, but the park trails are now open, and they are walking trails, I must say that, they are not golf, golf cart trails any longer. I had to go out and get a sign, put it right in the front of the trail to say, "No golf carts or motorized vehicles," because we actually, I actually caught someone the day after we had them finished riding their golf carts. So they are open, and if you haven't had a chance to go out there, please go out there and look at how nice they turned out. Okay, so that's the park trails. The playground equipment is up and running, we've already had the kids playing on it, I've got a lot of nice feedback regarding the equipment, turned out nice, and I do know we need some additional work around the, the park.
The edge there.
The edge, yes, thank you.
Backfill that.
Yeah. I did speak to the landscaper, he's had some family issues, so he hasn't had a chance to get up there, but we are aware of it, and we are going to be having that fixed. Just one more thing before, and I didn't, I just remembered it, Boblink isn't going to be completed until September 7th, just found that out today. Yeah.
September 7th?
September 7th, around the calendar, he said. I was not happy when I spoke to him, but there's nothing I can do about it. Okay, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Any questions for Janet?
No, but I would like to say just a couple of words about the work that you did on those trails, and, and the playground equipment. And I walked there this morning after the little rain, and they seem to be holding up really well. I really liked the detail that they put in, backfilling it with the pine straw and such, it's really a nice-looking trail. The back areas on the yellow loop back there, we'll see how that stands up. I noticed he didn't put down that same material.
It's not done yet, he's got a few areas that he's going to finish up.
But even still, with the, with the rain that we had, it seems to be holding up nice.
Well, we wanted the rain for that, like, I'm going to call it like a clay, whatever, to pack it down.
Yeah, and it is packing down, like I said, it, it looks really, really nice.
He did a great job, I'm very happy with what he did.
It is, and it's a nice area to go back to. The nice thing about walking during the summertime on the trails is it's shaded, and it is really a nice, a nice area, and he had great work on the playground equipment, too. That was, that was pretty cool.
And turned out nice, too.
Yeah.
And I give those guys kudos, it was, they did it, it was 90-plus degrees that day, they came in at 8 o'clock in the morning and worked until quarter to 9 that night. They kept stopping in and going, "How are you guys doing?" It was really hot, but they did a great job, and I was very happy.
Well, I do want to follow up with one thing, is the sprinkler system at the park broken? Is there something we need to do that, since the grass was dead there, and I thought we had a sprinkler...
Wait, wait, by the playground or the big area?
The, the, so the pavilion, in between, in between the pavilion, that big grassy area there.
Next to it.
And then, I thought we had sprinkler systems on the other side. Are they, are open?
No, they're, no, they're working.
Okay.
Ricky had it.
Okay.
He's got it. Well, what I want him to do, especially since we have the FPOA event in September, the carnival, I asked him so we could mark the sprinklers, and he thinks he can spray paint them so that they're visible, because I don't know what else to do.
Yeah, okay. Well, I noticed that the grass was dead, and I was wondering if there was something that we need to do, or I could have Justin do to help out with getting that back up and running.
Well, if he could go out and, you know, mark where the sprinkler heads are, that would eliminate Ricky out of the...
I don't think they're, they're not turning on now at all, so...
Well, it's on the timer, timer box is on the side of the bathroom.
Is that inside the...
No, it's on the...
I'm going to have to check.
Okay, as, as you're facing...
I don't think it's getting any water at all, I mean, it's really dried out.
You got to set the timer. So as you're looking, and I have a key to it, and I think there's a key to it here, and as you're looking at the bathrooms, it's on the, the right.
Okay, so there's a key...
It's next to the following base.
Check to find it, will you?
Yeah.
And there, you have a key?
It's hanging.
Most likely in the closet.
Oh, I'll follow that up.
If not...
I'm going to check that tomorrow, because like I said, it's really dead.
All right, well, what I'll do is before I take off, I'll, I'll drop my key off just in case.
Okay, we'll get that up and running.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, good job.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I appreciate that.
Thank public safety, I believe Chief Shu is going to his presentation.
How much of a presentation?
I'm expecting a song and dance.
I don't know. I wish I was sure to hear that.
Wait, I'll get the, I'll get the light.
There we go. It's flashing. I don't know if any of you had a chance to check the emails or not, I've sent the copy of the month-end report for calls for service to your emails, a couple things, trying to cut back on some papers usage, and I fear that it's be easier just to send an electronic copy of the calls for service. Nothing major to hit on the calls for service this past month, we did have about 1,200 calls we answered, and roughly 240 citations, 160 cars stopped, something around there. Pretty busy month, but the main focus that we are dealing with right now, which I'm sure everybody's aware of, is the missing resident from Foxfire Village, and there's a lot of misinformation that's out there. I have spoken personally with just about every news agency across the state of North Carolina in the past two weeks, through email or through phone, and there's just a lot of misinformation out there, so I just want to clarify to the council and to the residents of Foxfire, she was not last seen in Foxfire, therefore it is not a Foxfire Village missing person case. She was last seen in Charles Mecklenburg, so that is where the report is originated from. However, she was a Foxfire resident, and we are working closely with CNPD, helping them out of their requests. So the last half of July up until now, we have been dedicating a lot of our resources to CNPD, so if you haven't seen us out in the bottom of the streets as much here lately, that's why. We are, again, there for whatever they may need, our biggest concern at this point is to bring the swats home, so if you do hear a resident say something about the Foxfire report, or Foxfire doing the investigation, we have nothing, and just if they have any questions, feel free to refer them to me, I'll, I'll speak and then clear anything of it I can. Also, and I know everybody got the email, if you're approached by any media, please again, forward them to me, and refrain from making any kind of statement. Outside of that, that's, that's been really what we've been focused on in the last couple of weeks, is the swats, so hopefully we have too much more to report on outside of that, unless there is any questions for me.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, sir.
All right. Thanks, chief. Very much.
Next up, Water Department, Councilman Sam.
Right. I know you already got this word. So we've been waiting on the results of the test well that was dug there on the second property, and I'm happy to report that the preliminary report did come in, and the conservative as a minimum, production is going to be 50 gallons per minute, which will be our highest producing well. We, we are, and I will caution everybody that we still have a couple of hurdles to get over, one, we still have to wait for the radiological study to come back, but in talking with Russell Underwood from the beginning, I believe that that is going to be a preliminary check mark based on what he's seen in terms of what he's been able to get in terms of the screens that are set in that well. And by the screens, I mean where the areas that they put those screens to get that 50 gallons per minute are outside of their preliminary study for the radi, for the radium. So keep your fingers crossed, but like I said, I think that the, the production is going to be greater than 50 gallons, and we should know something whenever the state gets to it. We were hoping to know something a couple of weeks ago, but again, we're, we're at the mercy of the state to get those, those tests done. Once that comes in, then the next phase of this comes back to the council in terms of what we're going to need to do for the purchase of the property, and, and that's something for obviously, for later meeting once we get the confirmation of, of the well, but good, good news.
Good.
Very good news, very good news.
So can I ask, now you said like 55, what's like 50? What's the norm for our other ones?
Well, the highest, the other highest producer is 40.
Oh. The power's fantastic.
Yeah, good. Well, and that has to do with the tower, but the, this, this will be the highest one, 40 is the other one, that's the second highest one, the, I think our average is 27 across all our wells.
That's pretty good, man. Very good.
And very good, we'll look at them, at the, getting down to business, getting the dollars for the purchasing of the property will be dependent on the reading.
Yeah.
Figuring what they, what they'll do when we get out of that lake thing. Anybody that's had any questions? Okay, next up to me, and I don't have anything in particular, we're going to move into the old business, and the first thing I want to do is go into the long-range plan. The approval of the plan, you all have this, I want to thank Janet for putting it together and getting it out to everybody. But more immediately, I want to thank the members of the long-range committee, and I hope I remembered everybody, Pam Riad's here, and we got Andy Moody, Guy Pecat, Betsy Grady, and Jason Daly, I believe, were the final crew.
That's right.
And I want to thank all you guys for all your work, and that was a lot of painstaking stuff, and we greatly appreciate it. And then I also want to thank all of the council for all of the work we've done trying to put it together and get it forward. If anybody has any questions or any comments about the plan as we have developed it, this is all a result of the last meeting, and it's been updated based on the last discussions we had.
I, I did have a comment. Yeah, for some reason, I thought that we had talked about, and specifically under infrastructure, that we had, there says published feasibility study regarding connecting with those for alternative water supply. I thought we, I thought I had talked about that in terms of we had done that work in 2022, 23, and reported to the village already what that, what that would look like. In, in terms of infrastructure moving forward, it was all about evaluating and reporting our annual consumption and our well site production, of which we had no statistical data prior to 2022, so it's just a...
Which year are you talking about?
It's in year two right now.
Year two, well, actually, we, we talked about it in year two, year three, and year four.
Right.
We say the same thing.
Well, I, I think, I think the intent, and I agree with you that it's repetitive, but I think the intent is, is that, that we always have it on the list in case something happens, in case for some reason some of our wells stop functioning, or maybe we have a contamination issue, or that there's always something where we have to maybe go back to our Plan B, which is whatever our, what, what you've already done. Now, did, did that feasibility report, did that get like presented, written, presented, written presentation? I think that's probably what we need.
Well, we could, we could pay for a study, but...
No, I meant the information that you guys gathered.
It was part of, it was, it was communicated during a council meeting, and as part of those minutes, what we reported in terms of what we discovered at Moore County, how much it was going to cost us to attach to Moore County, and the timeline associated with that. My point, though, is that, you know, coming into this, both the mayor and I, being new to understanding our water situation, didn't have the background necessary to be able to look anybody in the eye in the village and say, "I think we are here with our, with our water." During the course of the last year and a half, I certainly have gained much more understanding in terms of the production of our wells and the current status of the aquifer to say that we are in no immediate danger or concern regarding the water and/or the aquifer that we're sitting on top of to pull from, so, and because we don't have the statistics from previous years, and we are now getting those statistics, it seems more appropriate for the plan that we would continue to evaluate those statistics year over year, and, and then react based on that evaluation. I don't see a need to do a yearly feasibility study and present that as part of the study to talk about connecting to Moore County, because we're not there, we, we don't even need to be there. What we do need to do is, is be on top of and report, this is the status of our wells, this is the capacity, and this is what, you know, this is where we're at. And then, because we are reporting that, as we get to a position where we need to now look at connecting to Moore County, that's, that's when we would take up the feasibility to more formal feasibility study for the connection. That's what I'm proposing.
Right, oh, no, and, yeah, right, and like in, in year three, we say ongoing evaluation of long-term water, and I think that's kind of, we just need to...
But we want to...
We want to check the box saying, yes, we're, you know, we're doing this, but I think, I don't know, in my, in my, I think what people were thinking is, is that the information that you did gather, like the costs and all of that, that it would be in a document separate from this, that we... like the costs and all of that, that it would be in a document separate from minutes that it could be filed. So it would be easily attainable if maybe you're not available or Lisa's not available or we don't remember what meeting that was discussed. You know what I'm saying?
Sure.
So that it's.
I'd be happy to put that on, uh, into, into a document.
Yeah, I think that's the only thing that's needed.
Yeah.
Just so that everyone, you know, can get to it easily.
And I don't, and again, I don't, I, uh, my only, um, reason for bringing this up is just to tweak the way that this was written in terms of we, as opposed to publishing, I'm sorry, going through the process of looking at Moore County, reevaluating that whole process, putting out a report, that I would change that to what I just had mentioned, which was the evaluation and recording of the annual consumption and the welfare of the, uh, health of our wells year over year. So I would just rewrite that a little bit, if you're okay, if I could give you some language for that?
What I think we should do, and I think the intent was to, now that we have this written, except, um, and I know we talked about this before. We only have four years here. We don't have five, it's four. Don has a theory as to why that is. But, um, my, my point is, is that we, we all look at this and then edit it and then approve it. Maybe at our work session is what I'm thinking. Because this is just basically our discussions of what we, because I could have made mistakes, I could have pulled things into the wrong years, you know?
Well, I'm glad to hear that, and I don't know if you're gonna disagree with that or not, but because there were some other things that I thought on here that we had talked about, which is specific to assigning, assigning duties.
Right.
I mean, that's fine, I, I just, I, I don't want to keep delaying implementing this, um, because, you know, perfection is never achievable. So we do the best we can.
No, but this is a document that's gonna, we're gonna pass along to our.
But it's not gonna be perfect. And so we just, we've got to realize that.
No, I agree with you.
Perfection is the enemy of progress.
But again, I would repeat that we can do, we can go through this year over year, but until we assign responsibility.
Well, then we gotta do this soon. My break, we, this is just way too long.
Well, let's put it on the.
So I think the work set, I mean, again, the, the biggest, and again, year five is not in here and you can, you can.
Cause I don't think there is.
Separate, I don't think we need a year five, to be honest with you.
Then we shouldn't call it the, well.
A long-range plan.
It is a long-range plan, it's not five-year plan. So, and that's fine. Um, you know, I definitely think we should, we should all look at it, make sure it's.
That's what I hope everyone had done already.
Well, and I, and I, and that's so.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, that's why I have all these comments on here, and we can talk about it now or we can wait.
We can, we can talk about it now. We can talk about it now.
Okay.
Well, Don's not here. Yeah. Don Nelson.
Um, well, we're still a majority, we're still a quorum.
And, and I'll be honest, I, I really have a chance to go through it. Yeah, I, I mean, I just pulled it together.
Yeah?
Yesterday, so.
How about this, how about this? Why, why don't we feed, uh, to the, to the group, feed responses, all my notes, I could feed them in just like everybody else, share them with the group, and then when we come back on our work session, we beat it for the work session. And we'll all be there together and we can.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that.
We gotta put an end date to this, sorry.
Right.
Go forward.
At our work session.
Okay, cool. All right, uh, next thing up, uh, Board of Adjustment training is scheduled. Um, did you get on that?
I think it was August twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
Yes. Good time.
Um, and, uh, my point is coming over to do the training. Uh, if the council wants to attend, they should be as an observer. Cause we don't want that to be.
Did you look at the link I sent, uh, regarding what is, what's currently out there in terms of orientation for a Board of Adjustments person?
I have, I've seen the link.
Okay. Uh, I'll, I'll resend that to, to everybody.
Thank you.
I'd send it to you, but it was a pretty comprehensive, if you're a new board member, and this is just not legal as much as what is your general responsibilities. Uh, I kind of included you as well, but, but maybe not.
Okay. I don't understand that link, but okay.
I don't know. What was that, Gary, can you send that to me too?
I will, yeah.
If you send it, you send it.
Very good.
Thanks.
All right, uh. So I'm gonna do that. You'll do that and we can, um, use that as background information.
Okay.
But, um, we think it's important that the board gets some instructions from the village, to support the village.
And, and this, this link, this data is great pre-reading, I think, to get them ready for that, for that day.
We can get that, get that to them as well.
Okay.
Old business.
Didn't you want to talk about the appearance committee?
Hmm? Okay.
Didn't you want to talk about the appearance committee here?
That's what I was gonna do. Old business, appearance committee. Uh, we talked about last meeting, we were looking at, and looking at our current, um, ordinance and our, the state's, uh, ordinance. We have some disconnects, so we need to align those. And for our work session, I would really like to go through this and figure out what we want to do. Do we want to rename this a, a committee as opposed to a commission and have specific limits on what they can and should do? Uh, I think that's what we want to do at the, uh, in the work session.
I agree, that's, yeah, because the appearance commission is not, it's not what we need right now.
We need to make sure that it's legal to do it and then, you know, what, what the ramifications of that are and what we want them to do. And so it'll be a while before we can get a, a firm description of what we want the commissioner committee to do. Okay, any other questions about that?
So we're gonna take this, um, also at the.
At the work session. Yes, correct. I assume we'll be done with this by the end of today.
Well, you did, you did, you did provide copies of the definition of the appearance commission.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would encourage everyone to read that along with one sixty D.
Along with one sixty D, nine sixty.
And it's extremely, um, involved, and I think that's not what the, what the village needs.
Yeah, I think we want to be less broad than they are. Boy, it's gonna be kind of complicated. Okay, uh, any other questions on old business? Any other old business? Okay. Uh, new business. The village, uh, Park Long Lake pine restoration. We did put online on the website, uh, the slideshow presented to us at the last meeting, followed with brief explanation of what's going on. Uh, we need to set up a meeting, a general meeting, and publicize it as, as being specifically about this project, uh, so we can get a sense of what the village wants to do. If we want to move forward with it, if we don't want to move forward with it, or do we want to do it by a little bit or a bunch? Do we have, yeah.
But we can move forward with the burn.
We have to move forward with the burn because that's part of the.
The burn of the five, or the five or six acres that.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That was part of the original.
We don't need any approval for that, we can go ahead with that.
Part of the original agreement.
Well, and that'll be helpful too. People will see what that looks like one year later, so.
So, um, based on that, does anybody have any timeframe where they'd love that? I think it might be a good time to get everybody together to announce it.
For the public?
For the public meeting, yeah. We want, we want everybody who is interested to come and sit and listen to them. They said they would do a presentation to the whole village if we want.
Right, now this wouldn't be a public, a formal public hearing, it's just a, a public meeting, right?
Just another meeting, it would be a, a special meeting if we want. And we have to sit in there, so we want to do that this month, we want to push that off till September.
September, the week of September. Why don't we wait till after school starts at least? Cause people get so, they have a lot of.
I have to wait.
I, I think it starts in the beginning of Sep, well, I don't know.
I think it might start now.
Starts at the last week of August. But they really are in swing in September, right? So maybe middle of September.
Middle of September.
Can we?
Good news.
We'll look at some dates with some folks and see if, and I'll get with you.
Okay.
And we'll sort of.
I'll check out with the, um, okay, I can do that.
And we'll do that kind of in the middle.
Well, I also think too that we should maybe in our work session or our next council meeting or both, maybe council members could, um, at least give suggestions of what they think it should, you know, should we just let them do what they've proposed? Do we have a modified plan? You know, just so we can give people some, um, ideas to choose from, not just this is what the foresters say and this is what we're gonna do versus, you know, plan A, plan B, plan C. And just if we could come up with options that the public could contemplate and choose from it, or at least voice their opinions on. Cause I think just to say the foresters want to do this.
We can put that in the next, next meeting, I don't want to put any more in the work session.
No, yeah, I think that.
It's already plugged up.
I think the council members maybe could be thinking about that if they're, I agree.
Okay, good on that. Um, in the meeting, last meeting, there was a discussion about putting a community lending library.
Yeah.
And I think the, uh, council was very much in favor of that.
Very much.
Yep.
So the question becomes, do we want to, where do we want to put these things? And, uh, I think if I'm not mistaken, former mayor Mick the Q has one of these available.
I'll put it wherever you want.
And he'll put it wherever you want.
You have, you have the box.
I have one.
Built.
Now, this one's also built.
Yeah.
So we could have two.
Who's that?
This one was also built by, who talked to us about it?
George.
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 This is built. This is built, that's why I gave the pictures.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay.
You have one that's like this as well.
Similar, yes.
So, well, my suggestion was one, because we have the cameras at the park, as we go into the park, um, just as the grass starts on the right, put one there, because the cameras would be right on it, so that was one. Um, okay, that was my suggestion. Where would we put the other one?
One about in the parking lot here?
Yeah, put it somewhere right in here.
In the back, on the back, in the back grass or something?
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that? We, we approve that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, that's a great idea. Um, George?
And then we will publish that on the, on the website.
I don't have a copy of it, so I'll have to, yeah, thank you.
We'll publish that on the website, it doesn't right now available.
I'll scan it.
George, just so I'm clear, George was gonna wreck the box at where we wanted it. He has somebody to take care of that?
I don't know.
Okay.
Did, did we discuss it with him? I don't think so.
Nope, I'm just saying that's probably something we need to talk about.
I didn't realize he had had that already made.
Yes.
I thought that was just an example.
I think he said he had one.
And then, um.
And Mick's got one, so we can put.
So I'll let somebody, uh, work with Mick. Mick, can we put yours here?
Yes.
Okay, so if someone wants to work with Mick, I'll work with, do we have contact?
Okay.
George? Contact Nick by?
I do.
I do.
Okay, I'll, I'll contact George and kind of show him where we like it.
Yeah, once, once we've got them up, then we let, let Lisa know so she can throw it on the website.
Yeah, we'll take pictures.
Stock it with some books you've got laying around your house.
Well, we'll ask for books. Um, oh, you know what? I forgot something. Can I bring it up?
Does that have to do with the?
No.
Okay, hold on. Um, so in terms of, well, I think there's just a couple of things I'd like to follow up with George. One, one, and maybe, I don't know if you've done this before, Mick, so, uh, but in terms of keeping up with it, right? So, so we place it in, we, we, we get the resources to set it up. The ongoing, whatever that commitment is, maintenance, we'll call it, in terms of making sure that we're restocking or whatever that case is, uh, I'd like to understand a little bit about what that entails.
Well, the restocking is, is.
Restocking, yeah, it's a volunteer restocking.
Yeah, volunteer restocking.
So you take a book or you could leave a book.
Yeah.
And it might be empty for a while.
Okay, so if everything goes, we just let it?
We bring more books from home.
Then you hope somebody brings a couple of books.
I mean, we could maybe put something on the website saying if you've got books for the, I mean, if it gets empty, but I don't know if that's typically a problem.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Good. I'm excited, I think it's cool.
Yeah, it is good. We used to have that, it was really great. Okay, any other questions or thoughts on that? Okay, you have something?
Yeah, I kind of forgot about it, I'm sorry. It, it's new.
It's new, new business? Okay.
Can I bring it up?
All right, add it to our agenda.
It's regarding the park. I forgot, I'm sorry. My brain wasn't here tonight.
Okay.
I am, but my brain wasn't. Um, yeah, I got a call from somebody that was telling me, um, that we had some people who wanted to volunteer and I want to say thank you for the volunteers, that they were talking about doing something at the park with the shuffleboard court. And I just want to let everybody know, again, I want to thank people who want to volunteer to do something. But unfortunately, um, with the village property, you can't just go and do something to the property without coming to the department head, basically. So they had, someone was telling me what they wanted to do, it sounds like a good plan, but we still have to discuss it and decide if that's what we want to do with the shuffleboard court. So, um.
So they want it put in or something?
No, it's there, they want to change it up.
Paint it.
And again, um, I appreciate that they're thinking ahead, I really do, but we need to talk about what they want to do and if we can do it and so on and so forth. So, uh, I just want to tell people and ask them, before going ahead and making changes to village property, let's discuss it first.
It has to be approved by the council, any changes.
Yeah.
What do they, what do they want to do? Get it repainted?
Well, they want to do some work on it and stuff like that. And again, I'd like to know what they want to do before they do it.
Haven't submitted a plan then?
Yes. Okay, so that was it, I'm sorry.
That's it, okay. You're forgiven. Okay, uh, now we have public comment period for anything, uh, listed on the agenda.
I do have one comment.
Okay.
Um, I think this will clarify that Pam Reyes, thirty-five, Forest Lake Drive. Uh, the question on the, uh, duration, four or five years of the long-range plan. We were, uh, we followed the model from the previous plan, which was twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two, which is five years. But, uh, the way the prior plan was, uh, developed, it was eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty. So it's really, it's really a four-year plan. Our plan is, is the same thing. It, uh, it goes, you know, it goes from the, it's five years, it's a five-year range, but it really covers, you know, four-year periods.
Makes sense. No, that makes sense. That does make sense.
That's exactly what.
And that makes sense.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other que, any other comments? Do I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or both?